I'd like to introduce you all to Rusty McClair. Rusty is the epitome of what you call an entrepreneur. He is the president, and correct me if I'm wrong, I probably, I should have asked you a couple of questions. Please join us right up here. Von, thank you for coming this morning. That's great. Von Dugan, she's a member of the planning board, Rusty McClair.
Hi there.
And also Kathy Barnard just came in, Rusty over here on the corner. Kathy Barnard is chairman of the planning board. Good morning, Steve Durgan. We'll go around so you get everyone else.
Oh, that's okay.
So Rusty is the president of Hampshire Hospitality Association, is that correct? Hampshire Hospitality Holdings, which owns, among other things, the Inns of Meredith, the four inns that together comprise 171 rooms in Meredith. Also owns the Mount Washington, correct?
I used to. I sold it in 2007.
Okay. And currently, among the many projects that he has right now, he and partner Alex Ray have been redoing the Welcome Centers, a public-private partnership of the kind we are so fond of here in Wolfboro with the state of New Hampshire, redoing the Welcome Centers of the New Hampshire rest areas along Route 93. And I understand Seabrook is on the list to also be done, is that correct?
Well, I hope you know something and I don't.
Okay. I guess that's wishful thinking on my part.
I'm hopeful, we'll see.
It needs it like the others, so that's a great job. But I just came across one story. We talk about entrepreneurship that begins very young with us. When Rusty was a senior in college, I understand, where would you go to college?
I went to a number of colleges.
As any entrepreneur would.
I went to the University of Notre Dame, and they had a whole lot of rules, and I didn't realize they were, expected you to follow those rules. So I left there, then I went to Villanova. I didn't think that was very good. And then I went to a little school in Vermont called Windham College, and I started a restaurant in Wilmington because it was close to skiing, and that's really what I was going to college for. And started that my senior year and sold it the year after.
You only had $1,000 to do it?
Yeah, where are you getting that information from?
Anybody can Google anything. So he called it the gallery and invited artists to come in and display their work. So there you go. That's how it starts and comes to all these other things. And anybody who has the challenge of removing a whole asbestos mill from the middle of a downtown and then creating the beautiful facilities that you did in Meredith is quite an achievement. So here we are, asking you to come and share some of your wisdom and your experiences with us. And as we, people just came in and joined us, I'm just going to ask everyone if you would just state your name and your position with the town, or your business, your affiliation, so Rusty has a feel for where we are.
Great.
Larissa?
Larissa Malker, I'm the courting secretary.
Linda Murray, select woman in town.
Dave Owen, I'm the town manager.
Kathy Barnard, the planning board.
Dave Bauris.
Kathy Eaton, economic development committee and business owner, Wolfboro Trolley Company.
Steve Durgan.
Yep, great spot. I've seen you before.
Pat Sullivan, director of planning.
Peter Goodwin, planning board.
Alan Harding.
Paul Ralish.
And one who just sat down. She owns Blacks, she and her husband own Blacks.
Oh, they're a great store. Thank you for inviting me to come here and chat with you folks. By the way, you've heard some of maybe our successes. I want you to know I've had some failures too. And also, one of the things I'm helping out is fundraising for the museum, boat museum, so I'm going to hit you all up for money when I leave. I figured that'll get everybody out of here now, right? I asked to look at your feasibility study, and when I got it, I thought, oh God, it'll take me, you know, weeks to read this. And then I realized that these are double-sided, so this is about 800 pages. But it was an interesting piece of work. As far as this goes, I've got a few things I'd like to talk about, but I think it'll be more fun for me, and I think it might be more fun for you if we just, if you can ask whatever questions you want to ask, and there was nothing out of bounds about that, so we could have a dialogue rather than a monologue. So please feel free to ask any questions you can. You need a hotel in Wolfboro, and I have, I have two projects I'm working on now. One is the 95 Rest Areas, and one is a hotel in Durham. I have promised my wife that that's probably the end of it. We both turned 70 last year, and the hooks at Rest Areas took four years to get through all the politics and get it built, and these other things will take about that amount of time too. But I did get here a little early, and I drove around, and, you know, Wolfboro's a great town. It's got so much more going for it than frankly, any other town on the lake, including Meredith, which I hate to say. Some of that makes the job of building a facility here easier because you've got a lot for those guests to see and do. It makes it a little bit more difficult because you don't have a big, open piece of land that I've been able to see. And I have to tell you, and I don't mean to offend anybody, but when this building was being discussed, I came over and spent some time going through it, and I really did want to buy this and turn this into a small hotel. Then I realized that the politics of the community were that, it seemed like half the town was in favor of restoring the building, and half the town wanted to not have anything to do with the building anymore. And so I thought that if I got involved, I would have half the community against me and half the community for me, and that might takes some of the fun out of building something like this. So I decided not to go forward with it. But you guys should be commended. This is a spectacular building and a spectacular job that you did on this. And I know it was hard to get through and get done, but you should be really proud of yourselves. It's a hell of a, hell of a spot. As far as what you, a hotel in Wolfboro, this feasibility study talks about two types of property, two properties, two franchises, the Hampton Inn and a Holiday Inn Express. And while both of those, I think, would be successful economically, I don't think that either of those is, if I were in your shoes, sitting on this type of board, I would not be looking for a hotel that is a vanilla box hotel that you can get in any city of the country. I would think you were looking for an independent property that somebody who is growth-minded would build for you here and operate. And the reason I say that is Hampton Inn or a Holiday Inn, nobody's going to have a wedding there, or a reception, or come up for Thanksgiving to go to a Holiday Inn Express because they have one right around the corner. It's not going to be attractive in the sense that it's not going to attract people to come to Wolfboro. It'll, it'll help Wolfboro, excuse me, it'll help Wolfboro and it'll help the businesses in Wolfboro because people that are coming to the area will now have a place to stay. So it'll sop up the people that are already here, but it won't bring any new people here, in my opinion. And if you look at Meredith, you'll see that we, it's a big place now, but it started out as a 54-room hotel and a marketplace, and it was too small. It really just barely worked for the first five years it was open because there was no big conference room. There were, there just wasn't enough to do. There wasn't enough critical mass to get people in their car to come to that place. It was, it was where if you had a funeral and the family and they come, and their relatives were coming, it's where they came. It's where if Aunt Tilly came up for the weekend and you didn't want her at the house, you put her at the inn. But now it's a place where people come to to spend a week. We had 80,000 people nights last year in a town of 6,200 people. It makes a very large fiscal impact on the community, and it's busy year-round. February is a very good, very profitable month. We actually turn an operating profit every month of the year, including April and January. And so it's, it can be done. One thing that you folks are on, that are on the planning board, and you, this gentleman over here, I understand, which I didn't know until last night, that you have a planning ordinance that requires a hotel to be 50 rooms or under. And 50 rooms is just marginal in the size to be a profitable hotel. Whether you have 10 rooms or 50 rooms, you have to have a general manager, you have to have somebody do an accounting, you have to have a front desk person, you have to have reservations. The more you can spread that out over more rooms, the more profitable you're going to be. And I, I was really curious and surprised at the Wolfboro Inn when that piece of property right next to them came up for sale two years ago. And the fact that they let that go, I'm assuming now, I thought it was just, frankly, I thought it was incompetence that they didn't buy that piece of property. But now I see that with, they couldn't put any more rooms in, though maybe that's the reason. They, frankly, I think they still should have bought it anyway and then come and talk to you guys about changing the ordinance. The Wolfboro Inn is a great location, a nice product, it just should be bigger. In this, in this study here, I learned a few things. One is the study starts out with, on page one, it says that the town of Wolfboro has 2,838 people. Now, you obviously are a lot bigger than that, yet it says in other places you have It also said, which I talked to, to you last night, it said that there's a map and it says Front Bay, and I thought, boy, they've got the name of the bay wrong, but I'm told that it can be Front or Back Bay. I've always thought of it as Back Bay. Yeah, well.
Back Bay was actually where the, behind the Wolfboro Shopping Center, that was, there was a whole nother bay there.
Oh, really?
And that was, in the 1950s, was filled in because we didn't know any better then. And now it's a playground and tennis courts and all of that. But that actually was Back Bay, and that was Front Bay, and that was Wolfboro Bay.
Well, I drove down there, and you've got a great spot for a hotel there, except it's your ballparks and your tennis courts and parking. If you want to sell that, I'd love to talk to you about it.
There you go, that's another. It's always hard to give something up, isn't it?
So the ordinance, I do think the ordinance should be changed, and I would think it should be changed to a minimum of 80, which is a break-off point for most hotels. But I don't see why you should have any minimum, frankly. A good, well-done, large hotel can fit in Wolfboro, it can be part of the community like it does in Martha's Vineyard Downtown, like it does in Nantucket Downtown, like it does now in Meredith Downtown. We own not only the four larger buildings, but we own 28 buildings in downtown Meredith. And so we have a lot of homes that, as they've come up for sale, we've purchased them and turned them into additional rooms, so they're scattered throughout the facility, throughout the town. And it allows us to keep the character of the town the way we feel it should be kept. Maybe that's, I can understand some people not liking having that much control over a small town, but, but it's worked for us, it's worked for the community, and I think most of the community is happy with us now. I will have to say, there were a fair amount of the community that wasn't happy with us in the beginning, but people don't like change. And so there were some, and probably still are some, that liked the asbestos factory better than Mill Falls. And by the way, to your, I didn't have a clue how bad asbestos was, so, you know, ignorance is bliss, so I thought, oh, great, I can tear this.
How many years ago was that?
It was 1983.
I don't think anybody did it that time.
Yeah, I remember so vividly one thing, we had to, we had to abate the asbestos. So we ended up wrapping the Amitex factory in plastic and having guys come in in space suits, and they had to wash that all down, and then take that water and drain the slurry out of it, and that was asbestos, and get rid of it. And, and it was also very expensive. And then, as, as we're abating the building, and with state inspectors and federal inspectors and all these, all this stuff going on, Amitex is taking the machinery and putting it on a flatbed truck. And as they're driving down the road with the canvas flapping, it's spewing white asbestos dust of the road. By the way, another thing this report said, one thing that really surprised me about this report, it talks about the 30 or so hotels and motels that would be competitive for you. They don't mention us. And I would love to understand why they don't think Meredith competes with Wolfboro. We will, and we do. And it said we had 115 employees. We actually have 600 employees. So again, that makes a pretty significant difference in the town. My company only has 150 employees, but we don't own the restaurants, and we don't own the shops, and a lot of the other businesses that are housed in our buildings. So when you add up all of those employees, it's 600, 620, or something like that.
Question.
Yes.
You mentioned earlier in your talk, there was no mention of a conference center. How important do you think a conference center is to what we're considering here?
I think it's critical. It was why Mill Falls in the beginning wasn't as successful as it is now. Part of it was designed, so it was my fault. We only have three rooms that have balconies, we only have about six or seven rooms that view the lake. It was a modestly priced, modestly designed product, and that's not really the product that people are looking for. And when we bought Bay Point, this is a really interesting thing if you look at the math of it. Usually in the hotel business, when you add rooms onto your facility, your revenue will go up, but your occupancy as a percentage will go down. When we opened up Bay Point, our occupancy actually went up. So that building and that restaurant gave us a critical mass that we didn't have before. When we built Chase House, we built a function room. Now, it's only 2,500 square feet, so it holds 140 people or something like that. But that got us into the wedding business, into the group business, and frankly, that's really what Church Landing is about. We've added, we have 10,000 feet of function space in that building, and that building is, I think it's about 80 rooms with the additions we put on. The occupancy there is, it's our highest occupancy building. It's by far our highest rate. Our average rate for, through the whole place is $286. Our occupancy is 62%. Our occupancy at Church Landing is 75%. Our average rate is $330, and we have rooms there at $695, which, if you had told me 30 years ago we could get that kind of money in Meredith, I would have, you know, it wasn't going to happen. But our, our highest occupancy rooms are our 20 most expensive rooms. When you think about that, it's, I think it sounds counterintuitive. It certainly isn't what this is telling you to do. That you've got a community that attracts well-to-do, thoughtful people, it has a lot of other things going on, and I do think you should have some rooms that are lower-priced. And what we do, and this wasn't by design, by the way, there was no great master plan. I've heard people say that a lot, that, you know, really planned this out well. I didn't plan anything. I didn't have a clue that we would get to be the size we are. I really didn't think we could, we could do it. I didn't, I either have a feasibility study when we did Mill Falls. The funny thing is, I built Mill Falls, Bay Point, and Chase House without doing a feasibility study. When we got to Church Landing, probably because the size of it, it was $13 million to build and buy the land, it turned out to be almost 15. So the bank required me to have a feasibility study done. The feasibility study said it wouldn't work, which I have sitting on my desk at home. And then the bank was put in the position of saying either no, or going against the feasibility study, and fortunately, they said, okay, we're going to do it anyway. And that was New Hampshire Savings Bank and Meredith Village Savings Bank, who we still use.
I have a question. How's it, how important is it for a hotel to be on the lake?
If you can, if you can get on the lake, get on the lake. Yeah, the money that you're going to spend, the extra money, I think you are going to get back in fates because of being on the water. We had the, the plus of being on the water and being on a highly trafficked road, so people were able to see us and get there you don't know you're on the road. If you could find any piece of land in Wolfboro that is on the road and on the lake, I think that should be, that would be where you would want to put it. It's another thing about this study and talking about the kind of properties it talks about, it specifically says you're, they're not making any judgments on location. I do think that if you have a more detailed, well, not detail, there's a lot of details in this, but another type of study that they should make a determination of, there's really two things you're trying to build here. One is an in-town, off-the-water hotel. The other is an on-the-water resort. And the resort is what I think you as a town should be looking for. One thing that Mill Falls, once Chase House was done, once, once, once everything was done, Church Landing, it's used, it's used by the community literally every day. There's some kind of meeting going on. And, you know, every funeral in town, we have something going on with it. Driving over here today, the amount of trees down in Melvin Village and Tufton Borough and Ball Peak, yeah.
It looks like a log with the stuff.
Yeah, it's amazing to me. But we had, in two and a half days, three days, three nights, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, and Thursday night, we sold 334 rooms to people who were without power. Now, we only charge $79 a room because you don't want to have people think they're being gouged when they're hurt, but, we, yeah, well, it's good business too, in the long run. It's a community place. I mean, we could have made a lot of money in the short run, but if you're building something like this, you can't be thinking about the short run. First of all, it's expensive. I did look, our assessed value for the land and buildings we own in Meredith is $28,600,000. So that's the assessed value of the, of the buildings. The enterprise value is more than twice that. So it's, it gets to be a big business, and when you can help people, it's better to help them.
I have one other question. Do you have any competitors, any other hotels lodging in, around you?
No.
I was trying to think of that, and I couldn't think of any other.
And I will tell you, and maybe this is something you'll, we will have to grapple with, we have worked pretty hard to keep other hotels out. We bought land. When I heard there was a hotel looking at a piece of property, I bought one piece and I invested in the property with the other, with the owner of another piece of property. So it gives us a great advantage, frankly. But you won't have, you have that advantage too. You're not going to have anyone around you building a big place, I don't think. And you've got the infrastructure here that's going to attract people.
A swimming pool. Do you have a swimming pool?
Oh, God, yeah, we do. And actually, we have three swimming pools. Eat outside jacuzzis, and they're expensive to build, they're very expensive to operate. Nobody ever uses them, but yes, you have to have one.
Well, the reason I ask is that, it's my understanding that the high school has a swimming coach and a swimming team to coach, but they go over to Meredith to swim. Well, my thought was that if we were going to get into this enterprise, have a swimming facility, which is obviously going to be used by the local folks, and the swimming team.
Where do they swim in Meredith?
I don't know.
I think they actually go to Laconia.
What?
I think it's Laconia, Alan.
Well, all right. It's not here, that's the point.
Yeah, I think that's.
I don't know.
I think they actually go to Laconia.
What?
I think it's Laconia, Alan.
Well, all right.
I think the old Y.
It's not here, that's the point.
Yeah, I think that sounds more feasible than it becomes. If you're having a pool, when I say nobody uses it, we max out at about 370, 380 people. And the pools get used by six, eight, 10, 12 people a day. So it's not very much. But when they're there, it's very important to them. So to have 20 kids come from the local swim club to use it, I know you're going to get complaints that Mrs. Smith is going to say, I'm paying $500 for my room, my kid got kicked out of the pool because other people were there. That'll happen. So we tried that in the very beginning. We had a, we have a small pool at Mill Falls, Original Inn. And I used to allow people to come and use the pool locally. Well, one person I said yes to, and then that person told their friends. And by the time I--
The whole town was there.
By the time, yes, I had 50 people there, and they did come all the time. And so they used it a lot, and we ended up having to stop that.
Is that important at all for a conference center to have a pool?
It's not important for the conference center, but it's important to be a fully functional resort hotel need to have a pool. Like I said, we have three of them, and we, they're not particularly big pools. And we get, and we have almost 2,000 feet of lake frontage. And we get complaints, even during the summer, that the pools are too small. But we've got a 35-mile-long lake out in front of them that they can swim in. So, you know, it's, you're not going to win on everything.
Rusty, does Meredith have, I guess I ask a little bit about their planning structure and how it's impacted your plans and your growth. For instance, one of the things that we're talking back and forth with the planning board about they're looking at is possibility of architectural standards to replace the 50-room limit in order to keep any hotels that are built within the character of our town. Have you had any experience with that, and what are your thoughts on it?
You were asking about our town and how our planning and zoning works. I was chairman of our zoning board for 10 years. 1982, we drew up a master plan. The master plan, at least the commercial part of it, I wrote, and it was basically the business plan for Mill Falls. What we would do with Amitex. And that helped immensely with the planning board because everybody had signed off on it, the townspeople had voted on it to accept the master plan. In that master plan was the demolition of Amitex and the implementation of a hotel and a commercial center. So, as I said, there were still some people who didn't like it, but by and large, I think most of the people did. So that was important. We don't have a written set of guidelines that says every house has to be white, everyone has to have green shutters, or in my case, green shutters and a green roof back then. But as I went through the process, I did say that we would do as much as we could in the typical New England style. We just got a large Rite Aid in town. Also have a large Irving Station in town. And the town planning board, even though it's not a written, I don't know how exactly they get away with this, but even though it's not written, they were able to cajole or threaten, or however they did it, get those businesses to make their buildings look significantly different than the original plans were. How do you, how do you make that work now? Do you, you don't have a--
That's what we're trying to--
Well, I think the way we do it and how we, not I think, I know, what we say in our ordinance is it has to be in keeping with the community values. And so that's loose enough that the planning board can interpret it any way they want to interpret it. And the way they want to interpret it is, it's probably going to have green shutters, it's probably going to be clapboard. It's, you know, we obviously have height restrictions and those kind of things. But when you get into a serious design issue, like, let's say, Nantucket, now you can't change anything in Nantucket easily. I've been going there for 40 years, and they've done a spectacular job on keeping that island commercially intact. I have to say, I think they've kind of ruined the island with the size of the houses. I always think that that's a bigger problem for us in Meredith and for you, the size of the homes on the lake than a commercial building. I also do believe that if you can find, or you probably can't find one piece of property that is going to be able to be turned into a resort hotel, somebody is going to have to spend a fair amount of time buying five or six or seven contiguous buildings downtown or on the road in or out. Although, let's see, you've got a big marina here. That would be a perfect place for a hotel. Except the Sewell Road folks might not like a hotel.
Not much, not much land.
Oh, there isn't?
Not allowed to exist.
How about, would Back Bay count as a lake?
Yeah, I wasn't kidding. I drove around that today, and the best spot I saw was your ball field. But, yeah, I think that, I know politically that's not going to work, but I think--
Mind if you have--
Yeah.
Or there are a bunch of houses on the other side of the bay. Bay Street where you, where you could buy--
There's also land down there, right?
Yeah, where the access--
Well, I think that that is, it's not as good as being out on the lake. But it's better than being five miles out of town in a box. And if you're going to allow that kind of box, that I wouldn't allow in town. Zone that somehow out.
At present, the only areas where hotels are in is allowed in Wolfboro is the downtown zone, the Bay Street area over where the museum's going to be. Don't worry about it. And then in Wolfboro Falls. So the area you're talking about where the ball field and tennis courts are is, although I've never thought about that area. And then the end of Back Bay is, and you're, there's an area of land there for sale, but you would also need some of the other buildings that are down there, so.
But if you got to the resort type of property like Mill Falls, we did 181, 186 wedding-related events last year. And we did 381 total functions. So that means more than one a day, every day of the year.
What do you have for conference facilities, and what kind of conferences do you do?
We do all kinds. So the original Mill Falls has a little 700-square-foot meeting room. Chase House has a 2,500-square-foot meeting room. And Church Landing has 10,000 square feet with a ballroom that seats 300, a carriage house which seats 125, and six or seven other breakout type of meetings. So out of that 186 wedding events, that's a wedding event is either the wedding or a rehearsal dinner or a farewell breakfast. And we had actually about 90 weddings. And weddings are a big part of the business. They're very expensive. We charge on Saturday night, Friday, Saturday night, and Sunday during the day, we charge $8,000 just for the room. And then they have to buy the food. But being on the lake, we also stole your idea. And we have Miss Meredith now, which was a boat that used to be over here, Alaloo Two.
Didn't know it was that boat.
Yeah, and that's been a huge success for us. And it's fun to have out there. And you see on the brochure, my boat. So what I like best about what the potential for Wolfboro is, is basically the same as Meredith finding a property that becomes almost the anchor for the town. And Nantucket, I can't think of the name of the hotel now, but it's downtown. It was a big old albatross of a hotel. And I think it's the Roush Companies bought it. And then they bought all of the houses, oh, it's the White Elephant. Ever been to Nant, most of you been to Nantucket? The White Elephant has been there since the 50s, and it sold a while back. And their plan was, they couldn't really expand the hotel. They only, wouldn't allow them to go up. They were land, they were basically, they couldn't even go out. But they had a great situation where they were located right on the harbor. So it was a beautiful place to be on the lawn. And they started buying up all the houses around them, turning them into, turning them shingle-colored, gray, green shutters, rose trellises on everything. They've done a beautiful job. Now they're up to 200 or 225 rooms. The actual hotel was only, I think, 60 or 70 rooms. And so they have expanded into the community where they can control their own destiny, they can control what the community directly around them looks like. And that really has been what we've tried to do here. I usually buy the worst buildings in town, which is good because they're usually the cheapest. But also, I can take something that looks like hell and turn it into something that looks better, and it adds value to the existing property that we have. Like I have, we have one, you drive over to Meredith now, there's a lady who can't stand me. Used to be a tenant of mine. I'll have to tell you, I think she's a little crazy. But she has a little building on Main Street that hasn't been open for business in 20 years. The main window's cracked, so now it has plywood on it. And she won't sell it. I know she won't sell it because she knows I'll buy it, and she just isn't going to let that happen. So, yeah. Anyway, so you could get some of that.
First of all, thank you for coming here. I mean, we need-- When you leave, each one of us is going to have a different interpretation of what you--
Yeah.
And I was urged to serve economic development because our people feel that-- Because we have so many restrictions. I was really taken by the fact that that document, comment about printed on both sides, signed, Donald Trump, President, and took the old budget, dropped it on the floor with a founding stud, and then tried to streamline. To what extent does the interrelationship between various boards and agencies in the town have to mesh somebody such as yourself, an entrepreneur, seems to work best in alignment with less regulatory pediments upon development?
Yeah, you know, it's a great question, and it's an age-old question. Are, is it better for the community to control everything? Or do you leave it up to entrepreneurs who are going to come in and do things? Nantucket, Martha's Vineyard to some degree, but certainly Nantucket has taken the very hard line, you're going to do it our way or you're not going to do it. But they also raised tremendous amounts of money. Every piece of property that sells in Nantucket, I think it's 7% of the sale value goes into the conservation commission from the buyer and the seller, so it's 14%. The average house out there is two or two and a half million dollars. So every time they sell something, the conservation commission gets a ton of money. I tried to do that in Meredith, and that didn't fly. People really didn't like that idea. I stole another idea. By the way, I don't think I've ever had a really original idea. There's a zillion places where you can steal ideas from. Just bring a pad with you all the time and write down good ideas when you see them. My mother had a home in Vermont. There's a hotel there called the Equinox Hotel in her town. And they charged the guests $25 for a conservation fee. Now, it turned out to be a little disingenuous when I got into it because they said that it was to go to the town for conservation. Well, they owned 1,000 acres of land there, and it went to spruce up their own land. But I thought it was a pretty neat idea, and we took it. We have a community organization called the Greater Meredith Program, which is our Main Street program. And we put in a dollar and a half tax, call it a tax. It's a conserva, it's a beautification tax. For every guest that stays at the hotel every night, they voluntarily pay a dollar and a half. And if they don't want to pay it, they don't have to, but almost everybody does. And it raised, it raises around $50,000, $55,000 last year. So our beautification fund and our Greater Meredith Program has an annuity, if you will, of $55,000 a year that comes out of our place, which allows us to have a paid director. And we put about $35,000 a year back into the community. Our goal was to plant 200 trees. We've planted 200 trees. That was six or seven years ago, so we're probably going to hit 1,000 trees at some point in time.
Where you two come from?
It is, actually, yeah.
Were you forced to--
No, 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 that was--
Did you have gone into Meredith with that? Sounded like in the beginning, you went to Meredith and did things because you could.
Yes. You know, I and Meredith have a very personal relationship. And so what I'm talking about, I'm not sure that you're going to find somebody who comes from the outside and is going to feel about Wolfboro the way I feel about Meredith. Now, we had only had zoning for a couple of years, and our zoning ordinance was maybe four pages, single-spaced, one-sided, I mean, double-spaced, one-sided. I wrote it. We got zoning in '68, I moved to town in '70. And I wrote the original ordinances and that kind of thing. So I had my fingerprints on everything from the get-go. I, I do think it's good for the town to have enough power to make sure that somebody can't do something that can ruin the town. to have enough power to make sure that somebody can't do something that can ruin the town. We have a condominium in town, which I can't think of the name of it now. But it was going to be a seven-story. I have the original newspaper article of the seven-story, 90-room, 90-unit building on the bay. And their marketing program, it was, it was all built out of California redwood and it was California modern. And that's what they were trying to build. And they built it because there was no zoning. And then the town took them to court. They ended up being, going all the way to the Supreme Court. And the court ruled in favor of the town that it could stop the project. So they built, they built a foundation big enough for a seven-story building. And then they could only build a three-story building on top of it. But that, it's a, it's a bad enough looking building as it is. But at seven stories, it would have ruined the town. And so you can't allow somebody like me to come in and do that, I don't think.
My older architectural pipeline is not like Nantucket. Not white, not green shutters, but something that says it has to be in character.
Yeah, that's, that's the way we, that's the way we've gone with it. And it has, I'm surprised we haven't been taken to court, frankly. Have you guys ever been, no?
Architectural guy, that one.
Well, ours, ours is too. And it simply says, as I said before, that it has to be keeping, in keeping with the community values. And, you know, but that's, that's a pretty, that means John Edgar, who's head of the planning department, has a lot of discretion. And it's, it's really him that tells Irving Oil, you can't have a flat roof canopy out here. We want to, we want to have a pointed, we want to have a different look. Rite Aid, we're not going to go, by the way, we're going to be tearing down the Route 3 and 25 brick building that's there and redeveloping that. And the bank sold it to a developer. That's one thing, I did promise Jody I wouldn't do that. So she's quite happy about that.
That's small potato.
Well, no, it's a big building. And, but the fellow who bought it is a, a real developer. When I started out, I wasn't a real developer. I think maybe I've, you know, I've learned enough to probably be that now. But I was more just a guy who wanted to do stuff in that, in that town. So I think the way I've done things is probably different than you're going to find somebody that's going to come in here. So I do think you need to have the force of the planning board and zoning board to keep them going in the right direction. Now, that doesn't mean that you, I really do believe it's got to be a partnership with the planning board and the zoning board that both sides are happy with what they're going to get out of the deal. I don't think it can be totally directed, you know, like 50 rooms. That's, that's not going to work for any, anybody that's going to come in who wants to build something that's good and big. You can't build something, you have a young couple here, the Cooks, who are going to build a terrific little project. But it's 10 rooms, I mean, not but, it is 10 rooms. But it's going to be three and a half million dollars. Now, they're, they're not doing that because they're, think they're going to make a lot of money on that. They're not. They're doing it because they like Wolfboro. Now, maybe when they do this, they're going to get the bug and they're going to, I don't know whether they have kids. Do they have kids? Well, maybe they'll want to do something bigger. And you can't limit them to 50 rooms. It's not, not profitable.
How do you make the transition, though, if you raise the number of rooms to 80 or 100 or whatever? How do you then, in the period of time between somebody who is going to develop it in a similar way that was developed here, how do you end up dealing with the big box motel who might want to come in and do their thing? Is that, can that be all done by saying it has to be done in the character of the town?
I think it probably needs to be a little stronger than that. But there, you've got franchise agreements in here for both, both properties. And they're pretty, for the Hampton Inn and the, they're going to build what they are going to build. They're going to build the same building that they built in Manchester and Omaha. And that's what they're going to build. And if you're not going to let them build it, they'll go someplace else. And they're not, they're not going to change their look.
Can height restrictions basically do away, keep, keep that?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Height restrictions are going to help. But most of these buildings aren't that tall. And in three, three stories, you're probably, don't you have a height restriction now?
Yeah, we do. I don't know what it, what is it?
45 feet and three stories?
30 or 35.
30 or 35.
That'll, that will help some. But I'm, I wouldn't be as concerned about this kind of development because they're not going to change their look. That's what they're going to build. And like I say, if they're, I was surprised at Rite Aid. And they spent a lot of extra money on that building. It still looks like a big commercial building, but it's a hell of a lot better looking than it was. And I was saying that the developer on the corner, what he builds are gas stations, strip malls, and Rite Aids. And what he was going to put in that building was not Rite Aid. It's the, not Walgreen, another one of those things. CVS, that was it. And so we don't need another big store like that. So he's been convinced about to, to do something different. And we've got three tenants, a, a big real estate firm that's going to take 7,000 feet. He's going to move his offices over there from Hampton, which is 2,500 feet. And the bank is going to take another 5,000 feet. So he's got, it's a three-story building. It's a great-looking building. And he doesn't have a main tenant downstairs. But the community will get together and help him if the business community will help defray some of his costs in order for him to take a little bit more risk. So that's the kind of thing that you're not going to get if you're going to find a national developer to come in. I really, you're going to probably need to have somebody who's going to start a little bit smaller. And you've talked about, you know, going from 50 rooms to 80. I don't see why you would want to put a cap on anybody. If they're, if they can build 80 rooms and do it really well and they can add 20 rooms to it in 10 years, why not let them do that?
But couldn't you realistically start out with a cap and then go back? Because you're, you're going to craft something that you're going to use for your planning. And that may have some, it may not be perfectly crafted the first time. So you would end up going to revisit it anyways.
It, it does, but there is, if, let's say it were me. If I was going to come in and I was 40, I would want to be able to come in and say, I want to spend the next 30 years building something that really is going to get to be pretty big. And I don't think I would risk, the initial risk capital is just that. It's very risky to start something. It's not risky at all, in my opinion, to expand something. And so if you know you can expand it, you're, you're taking the big risk putting those first 40, 50, 60 rooms in. If that's successful, the next 40 rooms are not risky.
No, but I'm getting the feeling that from the development that occurred in Nantucket and what you've experienced in Meredith, that you can actually satisfy more consumers by starting out with a facility that maybe has 80 rooms, but then changing that product look by acquiring houses. Because we don't have the real estate to support anything more than the 80 rooms. But if people are acquiring houses and are providing these.
But the White Elephant already had its, its facility. It's expanded to a very large number of rooms because the ordinance allows them to expand. Now, whether or not they would have, by the way, Nantucket was started by a family. Again, this was a local guy. His family, remember Green Stamps, SNH Green Stamps? Well, that was his family. That was their money. And he bought the entire downtown. He owned every single building in downtown Nantucket in the 50s. And now they were, they were junk at that point. You could, you couldn't give them away at that point in time.
Was that the Brittany family?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Thanks for the name.
We have several properties that are not in the zones that where hotels and inns are allowed. Several, two or three that I, two particularly that I can think of, that are grandfathered where they are, but are limited in terms of growth that they could do in those locations. Not really by the number of rooms, although that is one aspect of them. It's, it's because of the grandfather situation, because they're a non-conforming use. I may not use the right language. Help me up here.
Is that the Allen A type?
The Allen A, the Wind Drifter and the Lake Motel, which is now the Crescent Lake Inn and Suites. And both of those may have potential for development where they are. But they can't grow because of their location and again, our regulations, which are, allow what.
I would look at that and say to myself and to the other people at the table, what, you've got a property like the Allen A, which, does anybody here own the Allen A?
No.
Okay. You've got a property that you're probably not particularly proud of. And it's probably marginal in its profitability. Would you be better off by having somebody come in and tear that down and build a really, now, these are both out of town. You know, maybe a box type of property there would be better than what you've got. And I do think you could probably, well, actually, I've thought about this since I was asked to come over here and I haven't really found a great spot to land on it. You're, it's going to be very easy for you, I think, to find a box-type store, Hampton Inn. And at a place like the Allen A, that's not going to, that's not a bad thing to do. But it's going to probably preclude you or it's going to make it more difficult for you to find somebody who is going to build a really quality property downtown because the easy pickings are, are, you know, awful lot of people are going to stay at that, that other place. All the, all the, all the business that's already being generated by the town, not, not attracting new people in, but all the business that's generated by the town is going to go to the Hampton Inn out there.
If I can synopsize what you're saying, I think you're saying that Wolfboro needs to have unrestricted rooms, rooms or 100 or more. And that, that don't contact Hilton or Marriott or anything, but find the local entrepreneurs such as yourself, who grew up in Wolfboro, lives in Wolfboro, came to Wolfboro, and have that entrepreneur or a group of entrepreneurs, which is something, I myself am an entrepreneur. It's something I think is the best, most dynamic and the best way to go. It's a little hard to do because you could call, you can call up Marriott and say, send somebody over here. And they'll say, okay, we'll build a box or whatever you want to do, or Rite Aid or whatever. But I think maybe, maybe to follow your plan, the planning board, the Economic Development Committee and so forth, should look at Wolfboro and who in Wolfboro or what group of people could be put together to finance a brand-new hotel out at Allen A that's built in the, built in the traditional style or something. And I think that's a good idea. But you have to change the emphasis. I mean, it's sort of like many years ago, Wolfboro said, we're going to be successfully build factories. So the town built two huge factories, which failed, by the way. And because, so I think if we generated something within the town and then I think it's, to get the town to, to get rid of the 42, 45-room situation, I think most of us at the table know this. If you put it in the town warrant, which you have to do, you'll have someone saying, okay, we're going to be having a, we're going to be having a strip mall. Next thing, we're going to have that. And the whole town's going to, you know, be ruined. So I think that, that great care needs to be said that, that if, if the zoning has changed, it's not going to wreck the town, which no one proposes to wreck the town. But I'm just talking about the loyal opposition.
Yes, I, it's a, it's a fine line to walk. There's no, no question about that. And it's, one of the things that we did in Meredith, which was very controversial, it still comes up occasionally, is Route 104 coming into town and Route 25 going out of town. Neither are zoned commercial. And they were commercial in the first ordinance. But it seemed to me that if, if the town was going to grow, it would grow easier on both ends rather than in the middle. And if it was on both ends, it would be, that's where the car washes would go. That's where the McDonald's and all those kind of things would grow. And that's not what a number of us felt was the best interest of the town. Now, we, that was heavy lifting to get that zoned from commercial back to forestry and rural, if you believe that. And I think that's what we still call it, forestry and rural.
If Meredith didn't have you, they wouldn't have what they have.
There was a lot of people. Don Jutton was one of them, by the way.
What's a 40-year-old you?
Yeah, handsome, handsome young guy.
Handsome young guy, like when you were 40 and today.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Came to town and were presented with an opportunity that said, you can have a hotel downtown in one of our three zones. And look, we have a 50-room limit. But if we relieve that limit, you have to follow certain standards. How would you react to that? Like architectural, but not the shuttered exit.
Yeah, I, I think that that would be helpful. Again, I'm not sure why you need a limit of rooms, so.
No, I'm saying that would be relieved in exchange for quality.
No limit, but standards that say, a little, more defined than just saying, keeping with the character of the town. But some kind of standards, and I guess that it would all be what the standards were that would, so you'd have a little more.
Yeah, I, I think it's a place to, to work towards. As I said in the beginning, that you really need to become a partner with this developer, that he's going to get something out of it and you're going to get something out of it. You know, I hear the public-private partnership thing all the time. And except for the town of Clermont, the public-private partnerships that I've been in, the public has allowed me to spend all the money and they have collected taxes and told me what to do.
We've done a little better than that.
The town of, the town of Clermont, because it is in such dire straits, they did need to do extraordinary things. We built a 35-room small hotel, a restaurant, and then took 120,000 square feet and turned it into office space. And Red River Computer has taken all of that office space now. And the hotel, while it's small and frankly, not really economically successful, but it's the best project I have ever built. It's terrific. And the town, I never had to go to a planning board meeting. I, they, they set it all up. I went and talked with the town manager, the town economic developer, development young lady, and the planning board chairman. And we worked everything out that way. And we worked everything out that way. The town did put in the water and sewer. They built a bridge across the river, pedestrian bridge, and they built a parking garage. So that's a public-private partnership. We spent $19 million on that project and the town probably spent six or seven more. So it was, it was a good one.
I have a question about water and sewer. How important is it that the, that you have town water and sewer?
It's mandatory.
Okay, that's what I thought. We have a small sewer system and, you know, a little bit larger water system, which is part of what we're dealing with when we look at anything outside the downtown core. Limitation for, for instance, the Allen A, there's no town water and sewer.
If you're building 100 rooms or something like that, the sewage requirements are going to either be extraordinarily expensive and to take up an awful lot of your land or it's just not doable and...
So the kinds of things a town can do is it's the infrastructure to support it that a town may have to invest in in order to...
Yeah, and there's ways to get that money back, too. You know, the best way for the developer would be for the town to front the money and get it back on user fees by that developer and whoever else hooks onto the system. And that's very standard and I'm sure that they would go along with that.
Yep. Do you have anything else you'd like to share with us before we...
Somebody said wisdom. I don't have any wisdom and that's the end of my talk.
Does anybody else have another question before we wrap this up? Well, we can't thank you enough for coming. It's been a great exchange.
My pleasure and thanks for inviting me. I get a kick out of my ham enough. I like to talk about this stuff.
Well, it's...
Only thing I didn't like was reading this.
Reading is...
I'm going to keep this with me. Is that okay?
Oh, yes.
No problem.
Good luck. You did a great job with this. The Cooks are going to do a spectacular job. I assume you guys know that they've already, they also are buying the building next to them. Have they done that yet?
Yeah.
They have not done that yet, I don't believe.
Okay, well, they're...
That's in the works.
They're going, they're going.
It's in the works.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that the one next door, back...
They have looked at, there's a bed and breakfast on Martha's Vineyard called the Charlotte Inn, which is a spectacular bed and breakfast. There's one on Long Island called the 1860 House in the Hamptons, which is a 10-room property that is also spectacular. Now, these are places that are $2,000 a night. So that's probably over what the market's going to bear here. But I do believe that the market in Wolfboro can bear, if it's really good, $600, $700 a night. And I think that they're going to build something that is going to be that good. And, you know, if you can, if you can encourage them somehow, I think you're going to be, you know, just, if that works, if they can build a 10-room property and charge $450 to $695 or something like that and actually sell those rooms, that's going to get noticed. And it'll get noticed by some of the right people, probably. So, okay, look through the brochures, pick a room.